...to the wire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for going on the invitation. First thing on the agenda is public input. First person that's signed up to speak is Dave Sloniker. Are you here? All right, we'll skip to the, go to the next one. Greg Cooper.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. And I just wanted to, to say thank you for what you guys do. Your, what you guys do is very difficult. As you all know, I will come in and I will let you know if you're doing right. I'll let you know if you're doing wrong. I don't have any problems with that. But I'm not one sitting behind that desk. And I said, you guys are. You guys are putting your name on stuff. You guys are the ones that are held accountable, that the official record is, is left. And things that have been going on in the city have been going really well. Ms. Mize, you took a big punch in the chin for unwriting a wrong and understanding something that had happened. And that was the interim chief, chief in that whole process. And not many people would have the courage to do that. And who and how you guys are capable of analyzing and reflecting and judging character and using that gut instinct for how you guys manage this city is really, really, really important and should never be taken lightly. And bold, strong, courageous decisions and that judge of character, that's really, really important. And you guys are doing a really good job. And y'all deserve a lot of credit for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
I'll ask one more time if there's a Dave Sloniker. And I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. All right, we'll move on then to Mayor and Council reports, presentations, proclamations. There is not any. Consent agenda, discuss and possible action on approval of the Godly City Council minutes from the regular meeting held on February 18th, 2025. That is the only item on the consent agenda tonight.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Mize and a second by Councilmember Yarborough to approve the consent agenda. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to new business. Item A, discuss and consider acting on the approval of the proposed capital improvement plan of the city's land assumptions, impact fee capital improvement plan, water and wastewater impact fees for the city of Godly, and consider a recommendation from the capital improvement plan committee on the projects of the city's land assumptions, impact fee capital improvement plan, water and wastewater impact fees for the city of Godly, Texas. Mr. Armstrong. Yes, sir.
We get you guys so, sorry. I worked for quite a while today trying to get the projector to go for you guys, but have some technical difficulties. So we're gonna, we're gonna use the screen mainly for, and I didn't do full screen if you'll do that. So, yeah, Brittany's gonna help me out here because it's just easier for me to explain. Use the full screen mainly for the maps because it's a lot easier to see than on a piece of paper. But this is gonna be in order like you guys have it. So if you look at those projects, this is gonna be project WW202501. All right, so we presented to the CIP committee last week, the same, same list. That's why you guys have it, so you can see what they saw. They approved this. And so I guess it comes to you guys now. And we're gonna talk a little bit about it. We're gonna talk about a few projects that are on there. Number one project right here is going to be mapping. This is mainly for surveying, getting out there and seeing what the wastewater system looks like. So this starts everything. They're gonna build a model off of this, present a model. So what that means is if we say a developer comes in and, then it's gonna have a developer. Somebody, somebody comes in, they want to put in five sewer connections on the north end of town. They plug that into the model and then it spits it out and it says, well, you can do that, but it's gonna cause issues over here and over here and over here. So in order to do that, you gotta fix these issues because you're causing the, causing the problem. Development pays for development, you know, and that doesn't go back on the taxpayers or somebody else can come in and do that. What this is also gonna do is, once they get done, it's gonna identify all the problems that we have that we haven't already identified. The, we've got some big projects that we already have, but these are just gonna make everything else pop up that we're having issues. And then we'll make a CIP list off of that. And then we work towards a five, 10, 15, 20-year plan on how we fix those issues. Bottlenecks, things that are gonna come up, once you plug it into the model, that's fits it out for us. So that's what this project right here is. It's going, and there's, there's a map that goes with that. And I'll explain what that map is for you guys. All right, so I'll just come over here. So all this, all these yellow lines, that's what they're gonna be surveying. All these red spots, that's the man, those are manholes. There's more sewer lines than that. As you can see behind it, there's some green. But those are all gonna kind of flow into these main lines. These are gonna be dead end lines that they're not surveying, things like that, because there's not any kind of growth on that. It won't, it won't affect it. So they're gonna focus on these yellow lines and also our seven lift stations. They're gonna get all the information off the lift station, wet wells, dimensions, things like that. And then they're gonna go upstream and downstream of that, shoot the manholes. All this comes into play when we go to design the, a wastewater treatment plant. All those things come into play when somebody wants to come in and do anything. When you plug it in, all this is calibrated. This will be our model. The city hasn't had that yet. Or I'm not aware of them ever having one because we would have it, right? We own this. So once they do this, we own this model. This is the city. And so, and then you just build on that. As the development goes in, they send the shape file to that and it goes right into the model. Everything goes here and you're building your city right here on your sewer system. We're gonna eventually do this on the water. That's, that's a little bit down the road. Sewer's kind of a bigger animal right now. So, but that's what the yellow lines are. That's what they're gonna be surveying. They're gonna be putting that information in to make us a good list for the next five, 10, 15. And we may even look at a 20-year plan. I'm not sure how that looks. Especially if we're growing five and 10 years, it's like more important, right? So, but we'll, we'll, we'll put something in front of you guys. Once we get there on a plan, we can move forward. So this is the first project they saw. Any questions about that project or go with the next one? And the next one's gonna be 202502. Okay, so on this project here, this is gonna be, this is a main trunk line that's gonna run from the hospital all the way down following the creek to the plant. And what this is gonna do is it's gonna collect everything. If you can, I, I look this way because this is where the end of town is. It's gonna start from the hospital. And so the creek is your low spot, right? That's where everything's gonna flow. It, elevation wise and gravity is our friend. We don't have to pay for gravity. It's free. You put your main trunk line at the bottom of, at the creeks, because that's where your low spots are. And then you bring everything to that and it flows down there. And now you're not having to pay for that. You're not having to lift it. You're not having to pump it. So this main trunk line is something that's been needed for a long time, especially with everything that's going on today and the amount of people we have and all the projects that we have going. So I, the reason it says Godly Ranch is because it kind of starts right there at Godly Ranch. So please don't think too much into that. I know people will see that and go, Godly Ranch. That's just kind of where it starts, the hospital, Godly Ranch in that area. And I know this is a sizable number, but this is definitely a line. Everything that runs in Godly, I'm gonna say 75, I'll even say probably 80 to 85% of the flow. If you take 2331 or Pearson and draw a line all the way north out of town, with the exception of like Coyote Crossing and Rosemary, they come across there with the sewer. Everything flows from the north, it goes around to the west, it comes here, and it all comes straight into the plant that way. That's why this line's needed there, so we can bring all that around and bring it come through that big line. But so that's, that's how we pick that spot. And that's where we need to run a line. And there's gonna be a future project to where we connect some other lines in there. But this is the immediate need right now. This is the project that we have to have in order to catch the flow. In order to be compliant with TCEQ, which is the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, that's who we answer to on this stuff. In order for us to meet permit and for us to meet capacities, we gotta get this line in there. So we stay, stay with it and even stay ahead of it. That's where this project's coming in. And there's a map that goes with it. Again, I know it's a sizable number, but unfortunately, Godly went a long time without adding any kind of infrastructure. So we're kind of doing a little catch-up right now. This Magenta, Magenta line is kind of the layout. Now, these prices and this layout, the layout's pretty well where it needs to be. It might move a little bit. And the prices might go up and down a little bit, but it's pretty damn close to where it's at. Till we bid it, we won't know that exact amount, right? But if you guys can see where the line goes, the hospital's right here, kind of Dairy Queen is gonna tie in right here at the back corner. And it's gonna follow the creek all the way around. Follow the creek all the way around to 1128, kind of come down 1128 there. And then we're gonna jump right back on the creek and follow it all the way down to the plant. There's, there may be a few little changes of the line size there. Like I said, it may go up or down a little bit, but this is really, really close to where it needs to be. Starts out at 24-inch line. You're gonna end up with a 30-inch line according to the connections that come in and the flow that it needs from that point on. So this is project number two. Any questions about that?
The school is, would be considered the starting point from this line. School, Godly Ranch, somewhere.
That's right.
The school's line, is it larger or smaller than what this line's gonna be?
So there's a 12-inch there. Now that's ours. It runs around the hospital. But the kind of, you know where the ag building is, back behind there? So there's a line that runs along that creek already. It comes over to the property lines between Dairy Queen. There's a bar, bar fence there. Of course, you're talking way back behind Dairy Queen. And it comes up that line and it ties in right there at the highway and comes straight down to the plant from there. So that's a 12-inch right there. And that's what's coming off the hill. That 12-inch wire should bump into this 24-inch, if you will, kind of in the corner. So, and that will take on the flow. And it will take on the flow of everything coming off the hill from Godly Ranch and the school. And, and if it ever grows that way, that's, that's taken into consideration on some land. You know, if we have some growth, we're not having to come back in and redo this. And, you know, it, this will pretty well handle. Most everything is gonna come in right now unless somebody came in here with, I'm gonna bring in 20,000 homes or whatever, you know. And I'm being extreme, but, and then we revisit that at that time. I mean, that's, that's the development deal. And that comes into play with their development. So, but for right now, this, this is, this is built in growth and a handle what we have today coming in there. And so, give you an idea, something's coming. We're gonna look at coming in. So everything's coming around, around town here. And right now at Johnson County Automotive, which is, I'm gonna shoot from hip, it's right here, to give you an idea where we're at. Safco, you know, the daycare is here. So right in here, we're gonna look at putting down a line that's gonna connect this side to this, that side of the highway. That's, that's coming. This is the immediate need. And that's, that's gonna be a second flow. So you guys are gonna see that in the near future on what we need to do there to connect those lines, take off some of that flow coming down this lot, small line that's right here in front of 171 Furo. There's a bottleneck there. And I think everybody knows that. We've already talked about that project last year about needing to replace that line. Well, this will take a lot of the flow off of that. And then we'll look at a CIP project to where we replace that line across the highway. It's not taking on very much at that point. So there's, there's a big picture, right? But I'm gonna stick with this project right now. This is what we got. And we'll get the rest of that in front of you guys or whoever's sitting here at the time, right? Because we're, we're coming up on that. So any other questions about that project?
Was the 24, or is there, is the 30 on there also that's in this price?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the 30-inch is kind of the last part of it.
Okay.
And you can look, it's 24 all the way up to, to right in here. And right where it gets to the plant, the last, there's some footage, maybe 794 feet, it's gonna be 30-inch. Yeah, it needs to be in those bid prices too. I just, I don't have it right in front of me. You scroll back to the process.
Yeah, I saw the bid process. That's what I saw. I just didn't know where the difference was.
Yeah, it, it'll be in there. It'll be figured in there in the process. So any other questions on that project? All right. Yeah, so some 30-inch pop down here, PVC.
Yep.
And it says 80, so maybe there's a little bit less than I thought we were. But point is, there's 30-inch in there. There's 24 exact amounts. We'll have to narrow it. Really, once it goes to design bid, that's, that's when we'll know that now. This is a really, like I said, this is a conceptual price to get you guys ready on what we're fixing to have to spend to get this line in there. All right, we go to project three. Okay, so we've, we've already talked about this. This is gonna be the influence structure at the wastewater plant. In order to meet the, meet the demands and the capacities of our permits, we're gonna have to upsize the influence structure, the pumps, the wet well that comes in, the bar screen, all those good things that come into the plant. That wasn't done when we did the expansion before. And that is an immediate need right here. And that's why it's on this list. That's, that's rebuilding it. Now, if you guys remember, it's not just building it, right? And we're done. This is gonna have slots for a couple of extra pumps in the wet wells. So when we get to that next level, it's purchasing a pump, putting it in the hole, and keep going instead of having to do this all over again. So today's prices are way better than tomorrow's prices. And it's concrete, right? It's, it's easier to do it now instead of tearing it up. But this is the, that project that we've talked about in prior meetings. So another big number, but it's also an immediate need. So we're gonna open it up with that trunk line. Once we open it up with the trunk line, we gotta be able to treat it. That's where this comes in and it goes, dumps right into here. Now, the blessing on that, I'm gonna have full count. The blessing of us having to do this and you guys not already done it, we're not set with where we're at. We can put the depth where we need to put it and just put a little bit bigger pump. So we can come in lower, which gives us the option to put that trunk line where we're gonna put it. Because it's gonna come in lower than we currently are right now. Again, gravity's our friend. We wanna come in lower. And so blessing is, this didn't get done before because we can put it where we need to put it and take on all that flow instead of just being, you know, kind of constrained to what we have. Any questions about this one? Now, nothing about wastewater. Let's talk about water. Water. So this is a study that we're, as a, as a project to see, do we need more water? And if we do, do we drill another well? Is it there? This is a hydraulic, hydraulic study to look and see where the best place is to put a well if we need another well. Our sources are kind of limited. We got JSU that surrounds us. We purchase water from JSU if they have it. You know, I don't know that. Or we drill a well. Or we look further out. And just the fact is, we're not growing a lot in the water. We, we might have added 20 connections over the last couple of years, maybe. The water is just not growing for the city because JSU has such a big system around it and can handle so much more. And we're, we are, you know, with the wells, we're kind of limited to jumping out there and taking on big stuff without having to go find a bigger source. And then you're gonna go to surface water and the treatment of surface water with the groundwater and there's a whole lot that goes to that. So since we're not growing that much, maybe we do need another well. This study will tell us that. And for the price of $12,000, $13,000 to do this study and we'll have that, we'll know where to put it. I think that's money well spent. We have the money in this, in the, in the fund. You know, you guys have those accounts, the totals. We have the money. That's just a little piece of what we have. And we'll have the knowledge of what we need to do when we get ready to do it. So not that we do this and we have to go drill a well and we do all the things, but we, we do need to look at the future of the water to take care of the pests that we have. So I like being a master of our own, own domain. I like being in control of the water. You know, we're not throwing our hands up and saying somebody else come take it because there's no telling what your rates are gonna do if you do that. So we can kind of manage it. We're, we're, we're doing good. Let's have a plan. When it comes time for that, we already have that plan. And then we'll know exactly what we need to do. So that's, that's where this project came in, is they're gonna do the study for us to do that. So yeah, there you go, 11,420. So it's less than I said. So, but that is the fourth project. We talked to the CIP committee. I think they're very, very knowledgeable. I think they're gonna do a great job for you guys. And so very good to work with. They have lots of great questions. So I'm, I'm excited to work with them. We're fixing to hopefully get them a whole bunch of stuff to look at, right? So they do the hard work and get it in front of you guys. And then you guys get to put your name on it. So, there you go.
In the waters area, is there any private septic systems or private wells in that in, in our, in our city's water area?
I was in our, I was in our sanitary, uh, easement. You know, if there was, then they wouldn't have been able, they, they're not allowed to put them in our easement.
I didn't know if we took over an area that wasn't part of the city 20 years ago and if they have something pre-existing or whatever to my first thought.
Yes, sir. No, that's a great question. So we do look into that. When you pick a spot to do the well, then you do a little bit more studying around that spot to make sure. I mean, you can't have cattle within 50 feet. You can't have, you know, septic systems. There's a whole lot that comes with that. And that's all the rules that we have to follow through the TCEQ for the safety of our customers, citizens. So, great, great question though. And to answer your question, I think there are some septic's out there. And that's how we find them when we get ready to do something. So.
Is Rosemary Fields going on JSU? Or are they gonna use the private well that was on that property?
So Rosemary Fields is on JSU.
Okay.
But they're all sewer connections on ours. Any questions about that? That's, that's kind of a small project of what we presented, right? All right, guys. That's what we went over with the committee. And I think Andy had a couple of things to add to that. But anyways, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So Mayor and Council, Danny went over these projects with you. And what we're asking you to do tonight is to approve those projects as part of the CIP plan that's been presented to you. And I wanted to go over, the next item is approving the funding for the two that he spoke about on the mapping and baseline. And then on the water study, which is WA202501. That's that project number. That's the next item to approve the funds to be expended on those two projects. But the other two projects, one that's $3,968.811 for the trunk main and the $3,002, $3,23680 on the piping replacement, those we're gonna have to talk about issuing debt on. So I want you to be aware that I have been in discussion with Hilltop Securities. And just to kind of give you an idea, we will probably be back on the 18th of March, our next meeting. And we'll be asking for a resolution to be approved by the council for reimbursement of $2 million. That $2 million is basically kind of what we have right now in your impact fees for your wastewater impact fees. So we want to reimburse ourselves for that using those impact fees. And then a possible notice of intent for certificates of obligation at an estimated amount because we're waiting for one more project to come through at about $12 million for the two plus one more project Danny will be bringing back to you. But that'll be on the 18th. I just want you to be aware that's coming this way. Also, we will have to go through, or I have to go through, a rating call with S and P because there's no rating here for the city for your COs to be issued. So we'll get rated. It's kind of like a credit report. They ask a lot of questions. You're looking at May to June. You're looking at May to June, taking the bids, Hilltop taking the bids, and then council taking action to award the COs. And then you're looking at a closing date of June 24th through July the 8th before we'd be closing and delivering of the funds. So these projects wouldn't even probably take place, the larger projects, until June. But the immediate projects on the next agenda item, we can get started on those. And those are imperative that we get started on. All of these projects are all together. And one really won't work without the other one. Except for the water. But we're trying to be proactive on your water. So once we get that taken care of, we have an idea on the water as well, like you said. So I just wanted you to be aware. I've been on the phone back and forth with them and talking with them because that's probably a little over $7 million on those two projects that he's presented to you tonight. And I know we can't talk about it. I just want you to be aware of this. Because that is part of the, the CIP plan as a whole.
Can I ask exactly, does that be a bond project? Or do we, how does, how do we get the money for that?
It'll be issuing debt for certificates of obligation.
Is that, is that a bond? We put, we ask people to vote for it or what?
No, it's not a general.
Okay.
No, it's a certificates of obligation.
I didn't know what, okay. I didn't know that that's actually that. We just take a loan out, we pay it back as we go.
Yeah, it's issuing debt. So.
With regard to item A, I haven't heard anything new. We've already discussed this at length. Is that, isn't that the case? Let me make a motion to approve item A as written.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Councilmember Hodges to approve item A as written. Further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Item B, discuss and consider acting on approving and directing the city administrator to expend the funds from the water and wastewater impact fees for the capital improvement plan, project wastewater 2025-01 in the amount of $330,000 and WA-2025-01 in the amount of $11,420.
Motion to approve item B as written.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Councilmember Rodriguez to approve item B as written. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item eight, discussion. Discuss the master fee schedule, including an annual rate adjustment by Frontier Waste Solutions on solid waste fees. Ms. Winkle?
Okay, so this is just a, a discussion item to let you know what's coming ahead because we will have to have a public hearing on this. And it is a annual CIP rate adjustment from Frontier Waste. Last year it was 2.86%. This year it's 2.80%. And that comes up to 55 cents. And that is their consumer price index adjustment. It's in our contract with them. And those come in annually. We were a little bit late the last time because when it came in, I had just got here. And so we were late on getting that done. But this is right on time. If everything works right, we'll get that and we'll get the publication done this week. And we don't have to have a 30-day notice because it's not wastewater or water rates. It's an adjustment from our vendor. And that'll have a 10-day public hearing notice. So we will have a hearing on the 18th for this, if you approve it. And then we'll have to publish it. And then it'll go in our fee schedule. And with our fee schedule, there's just a couple of things that we want to make some changes on. On page one, it's just clarification basically for staff. On page one, your wastewater tap where it says fee, we'd like to add the words installation of meter. It kind of clarifies. People in other cities call it different things. And this just kind of clarify, clarifies this for the staff. And this just kinda clarify, clarifies this for the staff of what exactly they're doing. On page two, same way with the sewer tap. This is a clarification on the sewer tap fee, that this is a tap that's, uh, for installation on property with no connections. That way they're aware of that. And then, I think I had one more in red. Oh, the, uh, on the garbage collection and solid waste collection fee. It's currently nineteen sixty-two with the CIP. It'll make that twenty dollars and seventeen cents, which is fifty-five cents on the two point eight oh. And like I said, there's no action today. I just wanted to bring this to you first, make you aware of it. And then we'll bring it back on the eighteenth for actual action, because we have to have a hearing to amend our fee schedule.
How long's our contract run with Frontier?
I knew you were gonna ask that. It, it renewed before I got here.
How long?
I think it's five, right?
Twenty twenty-nine.
Twenty twenty-nine. And these CIP or CPI, Consumer Price Index rates are very normal in cities. This one's really a good rate.
Is this a yearly, is this gonna happen yearly until twenty twenty-nine, an increase like this for residents?
Say that again?
Is this gonna happen yearly during the contract up to twenty twenty-nine, it's gonna continually increase every year?
It could be. It could stay at two point eight six. It's actually dropped. But I mean, it's an increase compared to last year. I mean, it, they could bring it back and, and keep it the same. I, I don't know how they work on their, they're here tonight, if you'd like to talk to them and ask them about it? Yeah.
Only if you come up to the microphone and turn it on for us, sir.
Yes, sir. Everybody says I don't really need a microphone because I talk too loud anyway, but. Honored and, and, uh, Council, thank you for letting me speak to you. It is a Consumer Price Index publication, a governmental publication, and that's pretty standard for all the waste and recycling contracts. It can go up and go down. Uh, I haven't seen it go down. I've seen it, it was high, it, it ranged, yeah, like she said, this was good. I've seen it as high as in almost nine percent over the last twelve months. As you go month to month and you look at it and at this, the month, we've had to pull it from, because in your contract it says I had to pull it from January. It had to be specifically said ninety days prior to it happening. So I had to wait actually for it to, I would've gotten it to even quicker, but I had to wait to hit that month till they published it. And so it's not our number, it's, it's a published number and that's what the percentage is. It could go down, uh, it could go up, it could, it, I've seen them be at, at eight percent, eight some percent. I've seen them be at, you know, one point five, one point eight. So, um, I hope if that answers the question there, it's not, it could go either way, uh, as far as that goes. Because it does, it does fluctuate, you know, different months throughout the year. But they look at over whatever particular month of the contract was in and it goes back twelve months. It looks at that and whatever the average was. And that's what I presented, I present those facts from the publication, so, and that's what I use then to do the calculation from the current rates to your, to your future rates.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
With discussing the, the master fee schedule, this would also be the time to give guidance to the capital improvement committee to start relooking at the annual impact fee for water and sewer?
Well, we wanna get. We wanna get this part corrected first, so that.
But there's no action on this stuff.
Right. I think that, um, once we, once we've finished up with these projects and get them going, then yes, we need to sit down with the capital improvement committee now that we have them together and let them look at that study that was done, I think in twenty twenty-two. Alright, I think so. Twenty-one? Oh, they did the rates in twenty-two. Well, hang on, let me find that file. Uh, so now's the time to look so we can get caught up. Because through that study, they came, I believe they gave information of when it should be looked at and reviewed. And there's a formula in there to use, so Danny and I haven't had a real good chance to dissect that with everything else going on and so. But that's, that's what we're working on.
Anything further on this one, Council? Moving on, items of community interest. We have Spring Fest, April twelfth, from nine AM to two PM at the, the park.
And I sent you all information about the chamber luncheon, uh, if you were gonna attend. I'm gonna speak. I'm gonna give a very brief update about things that are going on with our new website, mass notification system, our newsletter, ways that we're trying to communicate better with the citizens. And I will have the directors with me and introduce all of them, everybody's new. And, um, let them talk a little bit about things that are going on to update, so. If you wanna go, let me know. I've gotta have a number from her for you all tomorrow.
Any further community interest items? There is no executive session tonight. Council, is there any further business? If there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned at seven oh eight PM.